Imagine being a principal, trusted with the future of hundreds of students. When you make one decision that destroys your career in an instant. What if the person you wronged wasn't just a student, but someone with the power to ruin you? This is the story of how one mistake led to a scandal, a complete fall from grace, and an unexpected twist that no one saw coming. Stick around to find out how this one decision spiraled out of control and what happened when the truth finally came to light. It was a regular Tuesday morning when Principal Wilson stood in her office, carefully reviewing the paperwork before her. The day had started like any other with a steady flow of students filing in for their classes. But for one student, this day would mark the beginning of a life-altering event. Fifteen-year-old Jasmine, a black student, had been caught up in an argument with another student. No one had expected it to escalate the way it did. But before anyone knew it, a full-blown altercation had taken place in the hallway. Jasmine, being the more outspoken one, was immediately blamed for starting the fight, though the other student had been equally involved. Principal Wilson, who was known for being strict but fair, was quick to make a decision. She didn't waste time investigating the situation fully. After all, it was just a typical student dispute, and, in her mind, Jasmine's attitude had played a part in it. She didn't see any reason to dig deeper. It seemed clear that Jasmine had been the instigator, and that was enough for her. Wilson picked up the phone and called the school's disciplinary office. "Expulsion," she said without hesitation, "effective immediately." In her mind, this was the right choice. Jasmine's behavior had been out of line, and she believed that swift punishment would send a clear message to the rest of the student body. What Wilson didn't realize, however, was that she had just made a decision that would come back to haunt her in a way she could never have imagined. No one had warned her, but Jasmine's mother, who she thought was just another parent, was much more than that. Little did Wilson know, she had just crossed a line that she would soon regret. The day after Jasmine's expulsion, Principal Wilson was in a meeting with the school staff, discussing the week's schedule and upcoming events. She was feeling confident, even a little proud of her decision. It wasn't the first time she had dealt with a student who broke the rules, and she believed her actions would set an example for others. She had no idea that a storm was quietly brewing just outside her office. Then, the phone rang. "Principal Wilson," a voice on the other end said, "there's someone here to see you." The secretary's voice was calm, but there was something in her tone that felt different, like a warning. Wilson was puzzled. "Who is it?" she asked. "It's Jasmine's mother. She insists on speaking with you." Wilson hesitated for a moment. Jasmine's mother had always been polite at parent-teacher meetings, but she had never stood out in any major way. Still, the sudden request felt... odd. But Wilson didn't think much of it. "Send her in," she said, brushing off the feeling. When Jasmine's mother, Mrs. Thompson, walked in, Wilson was caught off guard. The woman was tall, poised, and had an air of authority about her that Wilson hadn't noticed before. She extended her hand with a tight smile, and Wilson stood to shake it. "I need to speak with you about my daughter's expulsion," Mrs. Thompson began, her voice firm but controlled. "I don't believe you fully understood the situation." Wilson immediately felt a twinge of unease, but she remained confident. "I've made my decision, Mrs. Thompson. Jasmine was involved in a serious altercation, and it's clear she was in the wrong. The expulsion is necessary for maintaining order here." Mrs. Thompson didn't respond right away. Instead, she calmly reached into her bag, pulling out a folder. "I don't think you know who I am," she said, opening the folder and sliding a piece of paper across the desk. "I run the school board." Wilson's heart skipped a beat as she looked down at the document. The words on the paper confirmed it. Mrs. Thompson wasn't just any parent. She was a key figure in the school district, holding power far beyond what Wilson had ever imagined. For a moment, everything seemed to blur. The room felt smaller, and Wilson's confidence began to crumble. "Do you understand the gravity of the situation now?" Mrs. Thompson asked, her voice softer but still carrying an unmistakable weight. Principal Wilson tried to recover, but the damage was already done. She realized too late that she had just made a colossal mistake. The tension in Principal Wilson's office hung in the air like a thick fog. Her mind raced as she struggled to process the reality of the situation. The woman sitting across from her wasn't just any concerned parent. She was the one with the power to make or break careers in the district. Mrs. Thompson, now watching Wilson carefully, was calm. Too calm, but there was an undeniable sense of authority in her presence. It felt as if the walls of the room were closing in on Wilson, and she couldn't escape the overwhelming realization of what she had just done. Mrs. Thompson didn't raise her voice, but there was no mistake in the cold fury behind her words. "You expelled my daughter without understanding the full context. You acted out of haste and judgment, and now we need to address this." Wilson's hands began to shake slightly as she attempted to recover from the shock. She had always been a strong figure at the school, making tough decisions when necessary. But now, in front of Mrs. Thompson, she felt completely exposed, as though all her authority had been stripped away. "I, I didn't realize you were involved in the school board," Wilson stammered, her voice wavering. But the decision had to be made. Jasmine was clearly the aggressor, and I- Mrs. Thompson raised a hand, silencing her. "I'm not here to argue whether you think she was the aggressor. I'm here because I'm in a position to ensure this injustice is corrected. I'll be speaking to the district superintendent, and I'll make sure the board hears about your... quick decision." Wilson's face paled. She hadn't considered the consequences of her actions beyond the walls of her school. The district wasn't just a vague entity to her, it was a system that held the power to change everything. Mrs. Thompson didn't need to raise her voice to make it clear that the expulsion was not only unjust, but it was a direct attack on her family's reputation. And that, in itself, was something no one dared to touch. "Please," Wilson tried again, desperate to salvage what she could, "I'll review the case, I'll-" "No," Mrs. Thompson cut in, standing up now, "the damage has already been done. Your decision has already been made, but you're not the one who will pay the price for it. I'll make sure of that." Wilson sat frozen in her chair, her mouth dry. She didn't know if Mrs. Thompson meant what she was saying is a threat, but it certainly felt like one. And Wilson had no idea what kind of consequences she was about to face. It was a bitter pill to swallow, but the realization began to settle in. Jasmine's expulsion had not only been an injustice against the student, but it had also placed Wilson in the crosshairs of someone she couldn't afford to make an enemy of. The next few days were a blur for Principal Wilson. She tried to keep a low profile, hoping that the situation would blow over, but deep down, she knew she had made an irreversible mistake. As soon as the word got out that Mrs. Thompson was involved with the school board, rumors spread like wildfire through the halls. Teachers whispered about the backlash coming for Wilson, and some students even started to feel sorry for her. Everyone knew how powerful the school board was, and no one wanted to be on the wrong side of it. Wilson tried to focus on her duties, but her mind kept returning to the conversation with Mrs. Thompson. She couldn't shake the feeling of being caught in a web she didn't understand. As much as she tried to convince herself that she had done the right thing, the consequences were already unraveling. Then, the invitation came. It was a formal letter, hand-delivered to her office, inviting her to attend a school board meeting. The date on the letter was only a few days away. Wilson's heart sank as she read the words, knowing exactly what it meant. Mrs. Thompson had kept her word. She was taking this issue straight to the top, and Wilson was going to have to face the music in front of the entire board. The meeting took place in the district's large conference room, a place that always made Wilson feel small. The room was filled with the usual board members, mostly older, well-dressed individuals who held positions of authority in the district. They all knew each other well, exchanging pleasantries before the meeting officially began. But today, the mood was different. There was an air of tension hanging over the room, and Wilson could sense it. Mrs. Thompson arrived with the same calm composure she had displayed in Wilson's office. She didn't speak much as the meeting started, but her presence was impossible to ignore. Wilson, sitting at the front of the room, could feel her stomach tightening. She had never felt so vulnerable in her life. The board members shuffled their papers, and one by one they began discussing the usual items on the agenda. But as soon as they reached the topic of student expulsions, Wilson knew it was her turn. The chairperson, a man with a deep voice and an air of authority, looked up from his notes. "Principal Wilson," he said, "we've received a complaint regarding the recent expulsion of one of your students, Jasmine Thompson. Mrs. Thompson, would you like to address the board?" Mrs. Thompson stood up, her voice steady but commanding. "Thank you. I'd like to make it clear that I do not believe my daughter deserved this punishment. She was expelled without a thorough investigation, and her character was judged based on assumptions rather than facts." Her words were measured, but the weight of them was felt in every corner of the room. Wilson's hands clenched tightly in her lap. She had hoped to explain her decision, but now she realized there was no defending it. The room seemed to close in on her, and all she could do was sit there in silence as Mrs. Thompson laid out her case. "The truth is," Mrs. Thompson continued, "the real issue here is the rush to judgment, especially when it involves a black student. Jasmine was accused based on a heated exchange, but the other student was equally involved. Yet, my daughter was the one who faced expulsion." Wilson wanted to speak, to defend her actions, but the room fell deathly silent. She could feel the eyes of the board members on her, waiting for her to respond, but no words came. Mrs. Thompson had set the stage, and now it was too late to undo the damage. Wilson knew she had made a terrible mistake. What had seemed like a straightforward decision now felt like a heavy burden she couldn't shake off. As Mrs. Thompson finished speaking, Wilson's mind raced. She thought about the power she had taken for granted as a principal. She thought about how easily she had dismissed the significance of Jasmine's background. And now, as she sat there in front of the school board, it became painfully clear that she had underestimated just how high the stakes really were. Principal Wilson had spent the entire night rehearsing what she would say, trying to find a way to defend her decision in the face of Mrs. Thompson's accusations. But as the room fell quiet after Mrs. Thompson's speech, Wilson felt a wave of doubt crash over her. She wasn't prepared for the scrutiny that was now being directed at her. The board members stared at her, waiting for a response, but she couldn't shake the feeling that the ground beneath her was shifting. She stood up slowly, her heart pounding in her chest. "I," she began, her voice trembling slightly, "I understand the concerns, Mrs. Thompson, and I respect your position, but this wasn't a decision I made lightly." She paused, hoping for some sense of reassurance, but none came. The board members' eyes were still fixed on her, and Mrs. Thompson's expression was unreadable. Wilson took a deep breath and tried to steady her nerves. Jasmine was involved in an altercation, she was disruptive, and in a school like ours, where discipline is key to maintaining order, I had to take action. The situation escalated quickly, and I did what I thought was best at the time. I made the decision to expel her because I believed that her actions violated the school's code of conduct. She looked around the room, hoping her words would make sense to someone. It wasn't about race, it was about behavior. Jasmine had been warned before, and this time there was no way around it. I didn't see any other option. But as the words left her mouth, Wilson knew they sounded hollow. She could hear the doubt in her own voice, she could see the subtle shifts in the board members' expressions. They weren't buying it. They had been around long enough to know when someone was trying to cover their tracks, and they weren't going to let her off the hook so easily. Mrs. Thompson didn't interrupt, but her presence was enough to make Wilson feel like she was under a microscope. "I respect the need for discipline," Wilson continued, forcing herself to make eye contact with the board members. "But I believe I acted in good faith. The school must maintain a zero-tolerance policy when it comes to violence, and Jasmine's actions left me no choice." Her words hung in the air, but the silence that followed was heavy. She had no idea how to fix the situation. She wasn't just defending her actions anymore, she was defending her career. The chairperson finally spoke. "We understand the importance of maintaining order, Principal Wilson. But as Mrs. Thompson pointed out, the matter wasn't handled with the thoroughness we expect from our staff. We need to make sure all aspects of a situation are considered before we take such drastic measures." Wilson swallowed hard. She knew that this wasn't just about the expulsion anymore. This was about the broader implications of her decision, about how it reflected her judgment and, more importantly, her understanding of the students she was entrusted to protect. Mrs. Thompson had made it clear that there was more at play than just the incident itself. It was about how the system viewed Jasmine, and by extension, how it viewed the students who came from marginalized backgrounds. "I understand," Wilson said softly, her voice cracking under the pressure. "I may have made a mistake, and I'll accept whatever decision the board makes. I only ask for the opportunity to review the case again and to reconsider my actions with a more careful eye." Her words felt weak, like a last-ditch effort to salvage something. But as she sat back down, she knew the damage had been done. Whether or not the board decided to overturn her decision didn't matter anymore. The seeds of doubt had been planted. The principal, who had once walked the halls with confidence, now felt small in the face of a much larger, more complicated system. And she wasn't sure if she could ever regain the trust that had been so easily shattered. The room remained silent for a long moment after Principal Wilson's plea. It was as if the board members were weighing the gravity of her words, the reality of the situation, and the public relations nightmare that was quickly unfolding. Wilson sat still, waiting for someone, anyone, to break the silence, but no one spoke. The weight of her earlier words lingered in the air like a heavy fog, and she could feel her heart pounding in her chest. Finally, the chairperson, a tall man with a graying beard and glasses, cleared his throat. "We will take a short recess to discuss this matter further," he announced, signaling for the members to stand. "Please remain here, Principal Wilson. We'll reconvene shortly." Wilson nodded, trying to maintain her composure, though her insides were a chaotic mess of fear and regret. As the board members shuffled out of the room, she glanced over at Mrs. Thompson, who remained seated, calm and unwavering. There was no hint of anger in her demeanor, just the quiet assurance of someone who knew she had the upper hand. Wilson couldn't help but wonder what her next move would be. She knew the power dynamics had shifted, and she was no longer the one in control. As the board members exited, Mrs. Thompson stood and walked over to Wilson's side. Her voice was low, almost as if she was speaking more to herself than to the principal. "You should have thought about the consequences before you made that decision," she said, her tone cool but sharp. "Jasmine is my daughter, and now, the whole district will know what happens when someone like you steps out of line." Wilson could feel the sting of her words, but she remained silent. She had no defense left. She had misjudged the situation from the start. She had assumed that her authority as principal would be enough to silence any objections. But she had never imagined that the mother of one of her students would hold so much influence over the entire school board. When the board members returned and took their seats, the chairperson nodded at Wilson. "We've discussed the matter, and we've come to a decision," he said, his voice as formal as ever. "After reviewing the circumstances and hearing from Mrs. Thompson, we have decided to overturn the expulsion. Jasmine will be reinstated immediately." Wilson felt a rush of relief, but it was brief and hollow. The decision had been made, but the damage to her reputation was already done. She could sense it in the coldness of the board members' gazes. They didn't believe in her judgment anymore, and neither did the staff or the students. She had failed to see the bigger picture, and now she was paying the price for it. The chairperson continued. "We will also be reviewing the policies on student discipline to ensure this kind of oversight doesn't happen again. We expect more thorough investigations before decisions like this are made." Wilson's face flushed with embarrassment. She could feel the weight of the room's gaze, the quiet judgment. There was no mention of any disciplinary action against her, just a vague suggestion of reviewing procedures. But she knew that the board wasn't just talking about policy, they were talking about her. The very core of her leadership had been questioned, and she wasn't sure how she could come back from it. Mrs. Thompson stood up, her expression still unreadable. "I expect Jasmine to be treated fairly from now on," she said, her voice cold and final. "This incident is over, but if anything like this happens again, I won't hesitate to take further action." With that, she turned and left the room without another word. Principal Wilson watched her go, her heart heavy with the realization that she was now a pawn in a much larger game. The system had spoken, and her power had been stripped away in a matter of days. As the meeting adjourned, Wilson gathered her things, but there was no sense of victory, no satisfaction in having won the board's decision. All she could think about was how quickly everything had unraveled. The trust she had once held with her students, staff, and the district was now in tatters. Jasmine would return to school, but for Wilson, nothing would ever be the same again. The days following the board's decision were filled with a quiet, unsettling tension. Principal Wilson returned to her duties at the school, but it was impossible to ignore the shift that had occurred. Every hallway she walked down, every conversation she overheard, seemed to carry an undercurrent of judgment. Teachers whispered behind closed doors, and students who had once looked to her for guidance now seemed to avoid making eye contact. The trust she had built over the years was gone, and no amount of explanations could repair the damage. Jasmine returned to school a week later, and while she walked through the doors with her head held high, the environment around her had changed too. Students, who had once been her peers, now eyed her with a mix of curiosity and discomfort. The expulsion, even though it had been overturned, had left a stain on her reputation. But it wasn't just her reputation that had suffered, it was the whole school's. Rumors spread like wildfire. Some said the school was getting soft after the board's decision. Others whispered that Jasmine's mother had used her power to force the expulsion reversal. A few students even made jokes, mocking the situation and calling it an "inside job." The staff, once supportive of their principal, now looked at Wilson with a mix of pity and doubt. No one wanted to be caught in the middle of the mess that had become the school's scandal. Wilson spent hours in her office, sorting through paperwork, trying to keep busy in hopes of maintaining some sense of normalcy. But the whispers were never far from her mind. She had always prided herself on being a strong leader, someone who could handle any challenge that came her way. But this time, she hadn't seen the full picture. She had underestimated the power of the people behind the scenes, the ones whose influence stretched far beyond the classroom. At the staff meeting the following week, Wilson stood before the teachers, trying to maintain a facade of confidence. She opened the meeting with a few general announcements, but as the session wore on, she could feel the eyes of the staff on her. It was impossible to ignore the unspoken question hanging in the air. "Can we still trust you?" One of the teachers, Mr. Harris, who had always been outspoken, raised his hand. "Principal Wilson," he began, his voice steady but pointed. "After the recent events, we need to ask ourselves if our leadership is still aligned with the values of fairness and justice. Our students are watching us, and they need to see us act with integrity, especially when situations like this arise." Wilson's stomach tightened. It was clear that the staff had begun to question her leadership, and that was a line she couldn't afford to cross. If the teachers lost faith in her, the entire school would follow. She had to regain their trust, but she wasn't sure how. "I understand your concerns," she said, her voice sounding weaker than she had hoped. "And I take full responsibility for my actions. I've learned a lot from this experience. I've learned that we need to do better in making sure that our decisions are fair, thoughtful, and above all, based on the full facts of the situation. I'm committed to doing better moving forward." But even as she spoke, Wilson could feel the skepticism in the room. The teachers nodded, but there was no warmth in their expressions. They were listening, but they weren't sure they believed her anymore. The damage had been done, and words alone couldn't fix it. As the meeting ended, Wilson walked back to her office, her shoulders heavy. She knew she had made mistakes, but she had never anticipated that those mistakes would cost her so much. Her authority had been undermined, and she wasn't sure if it could ever be restored. Jasmine's expulsion might have been overturned, but the larger issue, the loss of trust, the questioning of her leadership, remained unresolved. Later that afternoon, Mrs. Thompson called. Wilson hesitated before picking up the phone. She wasn't sure if she was ready to face the woman who had caused so much turmoil in her life. "Principal Wilson," Mrs. Thompson's voice came through clearly, "I wanted to thank you for reinstating Jasmine. But let's be clear, I didn't do this to make you look bad. I did it because my daughter deserved a fair chance, and I won't stand by when I see injustice being done, especially when it comes to my family." Wilson wanted to say something, anything, to defend herself, to explain that she had been acting in what she believed to be the best interests of the school. But all that came out was a quiet "I understand." Mrs. Thompson wasn't finished. "But I want you to remember something, Principal Wilson. This isn't just about one student or one family. This is about the bigger picture. You need to be more aware of the system you're working in, and if you make a mistake-" And if you make a mistake again, it won't just be Jasmine who faces the consequences. The word stung, and Wilson's grip tightened on the phone. She had no response, no way to argue. The truth was clear now. The system was bigger than her, and in the end, it had shown her just how little control she really had. As weeks passed, Principal Wilson tried to move forward, but the shadows of her mistakes loomed over her every step. Despite her efforts to salvage her reputation, the cracks in her leadership had become too visible to ignore. The school's atmosphere had changed, and it wasn't just because of Jasmine's reinstatement. It was because the entire school could sense that Wilson was no longer the strong, unshakable figure they had once respected. The students, once somewhat indifferent to the principal's decisions, now seemed to view her with suspicion. Every time a disciplinary decision was made, there was a lingering question, is this fair? Students started to feel more emboldened to challenge the rules, knowing that a mistake on Wilson's part could lead to a reversal, just like Jasmine's expulsion. The respect that had once been automatic was now replaced with hesitation and doubt. Even the staff, who had once trusted her judgment, now whispered behind closed doors. They could no longer look at her in the same way. The discussions in the teacher's lounge, once filled with ordinary complaints about lesson plans and student behavior, had turned into quiet critiques of the principal's handling of the situation. There was talk about whether or not she was still capable of leading the school effectively. The real turning point came during a faculty meeting when Wilson tried to announce new policies for improving student behavior. She had worked tirelessly to create a plan that would restore discipline and ensure fairness for all students. But as she presented her ideas, she could feel the eyes of the staff on her, the cold skepticism in their gazes. No one spoke up at first, but Wilson could tell they were unconvinced. Finally, one teacher, Ms. Larson, spoke. I don't know, Principal Wilson. After everything that's happened with Jasmine, I'm not sure we can move forward like this. How do we expect our students to trust us, let alone follow the rules, when it's clear that the system is flawed? The words hit Wilson harder than she expected. Ms. Larson's question wasn't just about the expulsion, it was about her leadership, about the very foundation of her authority. How could she enforce rules when she had so visibly failed to follow them herself? How could she demand respect when she had lost it? The rest of the meeting fell silent, and Wilson could feel the weight of every unspoken thought in the room. She had no answer. She had no defense. All she could do was nod weakly. I understand, she said, her voice barely above a whisper. It was a moment of clarity for Wilson. She realized that while the board had reinstated Jasmine, the damage to her own position was irreversible. The trust that had once been the cornerstone of her leadership had been eroded, and there was no quick fix. The teachers had lost faith in her, the students no longer respected her authority, and she could feel the district slowly moving away from her as well. Mrs. Thompson had made it clear that the larger system was watching. But now, it seemed that the system wasn't just watching, it was waiting for Wilson to fail. She had become a symbol of the flaws in the system itself, a figurehead of poor decision-making and misplaced priorities. That evening, as she sat in her office, staring at the pile of papers in front of her, Wilson thought about the words Mrs. Thompson had said during their confrontation at the board meeting. If anything like this happens again, I won't hesitate to take further action. Wilson had thought that was just a warning, but now she realized it was a promise. Mrs. Thompson had the power to make or break careers, and Wilson's mistake had given her the perfect leverage. The next day, an anonymous letter arrived on Wilson's desk. It was a brief typed message that simply read, "You should consider stepping down before things get worse. The board is watching. Your time is running out." Wilson stared at the letter for a long time, unsure whether it was a legitimate threat or just an expression of the growing discontent within the school. But deep down, she knew the message was clear. She was no longer in control. Her authority had been compromised, and it seemed that the people who had once supported her were now ready to see her go. In that moment, Wilson realized that no matter how hard she worked to fix things, the damage to her career had already been done. Her mistake had set a chain of events in motion that she couldn't undo. It was only a matter of time before the system she had relied on to protect her turned against her completely. The pressure was mounting with each passing day. Principal Wilson tried to go about her duties with the same level of professionalism, but the cracks in her leadership were too wide to ignore. The faculty meetings were increasingly tense, the students were more rebellious, and the district was beginning to question her ability to lead. Every decision she made felt scrutinized, and even the smallest mistake seemed to make the situation worse. Then, the final blow came unexpectedly. It wasn't a direct attack, but the result of a quiet, steady erosion of support from those around her. One morning, Wilson received a formal letter from the district's central office. She had been summoned for a meeting with the superintendent, Mr. Price, a man known for his strict, no-nonsense approach to school leadership. Wilson's stomach dropped as she read the letter. She knew this was it. The board had already shown its discontent, and now the district was getting involved. The meeting was scheduled for the following afternoon, and Wilson tried to prepare herself, though she had no idea what to expect. As she sat in the superintendent's office, Mr. Price didn't waste any time. He wasted no pleasantries, no small talk, he simply got straight to the point. Principal Wilson, he began, his voice as cold as the room itself. The board has made it clear that there are concerns about your ability to lead this school. The events surrounding the expulsion of Jasmine Thompson have raised serious questions about your decision-making and your ability to act in the best interests of the students. Wilson felt the blood drain from her face. She had expected this, but hearing it out loud made the reality of the situation sink in. She had known the board was upset, but she hadn't realized just how deeply it had affected her position. I've reviewed your record, Mr. Price continued, and while you've had some positive achievements in the past, it's clear that recent events have put the school in a difficult position. We can't afford to have the principal's authority questioned, especially not by the staff and students. Wilson opened her mouth to speak, but no words came out. She had no defense left. The damage had already been done, and the district wasn't interested in apologies or justifications anymore. They were focused on results, on a leader who could restore order and confidence. And she wasn't that leader anymore. Mr. Price leaned forward in his chair, his eyes cold. I'm afraid we have no choice but to recommend your resignation. The board has lost confidence in your ability to lead, and given the climate here, it's clear that your position is no longer tenable. The words hit Wilson like a punch to the gut. She felt dizzy, as if the floor beneath her had suddenly disappeared. She had worked so hard for this job, built her career on a foundation of discipline and leadership, and now it was all coming apart because of one mistake. A mistake she had made in haste, without fully understanding the consequences. You will have the opportunity to submit your resignation, Mr. Price continued. And we will work with you to make the transition as smooth as possible. But if you choose not to step down voluntarily, the board will take further action. There was no anger in his voice, no sense of satisfaction in delivering this news. It was simply a business decision, the result of cold, hard logic. Wilson could see that the district had already moved on from her. They were thinking about the next step, the next leader who could take control and fix the problem she had created. Wilson's mind raced, trying to find a way out, trying to come up with something, anything that could change this outcome. But in her heart, she knew it was over. The moment she had made the decision to expel Jasmine without fully considering the circumstances, she had set everything in motion. Mrs. Thompson had made sure of that. She had made her position clear, and the board had backed her. Understood, Wilson finally managed to say, her voice hollow. I'll submit my resignation. The meeting ended shortly after that. Wilson walked out of the office with a feeling of numbness, as if she were floating outside her own body. She had worked so hard to get to this point, had dedicated so much of herself to the school and the students, and now it was all slipping away. She could already feel the weight of her decision bearing down on her, knowing that no matter how much she tried to explain herself, it would never be enough. The resignation letter was a formality. The district would announce it within a day or two, and the search for a new principal would begin. The damage to her career was irreversible. The question now was not how she would fix it, but how she would move on from it. Wilson knew that her time in education was likely over. She had been a principal, a leader, but now she was just a cautionary tale. The only thing left was to pack up her office, say her goodbyes, and leave the school she had once poured her heart into. The building would remain, the students would move on, and someone else would take her place. But for Wilson, there was no going back. The news of Principal Wilson's resignation spread quickly. Within hours of the district's announcement, it was the talk of the town. Local news outlets picked up the story, and soon, the entire community was buzzing with speculation about what had really happened. The details of the expulsion, Mrs. Thompson's involvement, and the resulting fallout became public knowledge. The story was framed as a scandal, an abuse of power by a principal who had made a rash decision and was now paying the price. For many in the community, it seemed like poetic justice. Wilson had been too quick to act, too blind to the bigger picture. The media reports, though mostly factual, painted her as a symbol of failed leadership, a kind of administrator who let her personal biases cloud her judgment. In the eyes of the public, the real victim wasn't just Jasmine, but the school itself. The trust had been broken, and the damage was done. Wilson had never imagined her career would end this way. She had dedicated years to building her reputation, striving to be the kind of principal who made tough decisions for the greater good. But now, it felt like all her hard work had been undone in the blink of an eye. She had never been prepared for the intense public scrutiny that came with a mistake of this magnitude. Every part of her life, once firmly grounded in the work she did at the school, was now being questioned by everyone from her colleagues to strangers in the community. It didn't take long before the town's social media accounts began to explode with commentary. Some people defended her, claiming that she had been doing her best and made a difficult decision based on the information available at the time. Others, however, didn't hold back. Memes mocking Wilson flooded Facebook and Twitter. Principal Wilson, the expulsion queen, one post read. Another joked, the only thing she expelled was her career. The worst, however, were the comments that questioned her motives, suggesting that her quick action against Jasmine had been driven by a deeper, unspoken bias. As a black student, Jasmine had become a symbol of the racial tensions that had quietly simmered beneath the surface of the school. Many claimed that Wilson had targeted her unfairly, assuming she was the instigator based solely on stereotypes or past behavior. And the fact that the expulsion was reversed only fueled this narrative. The public didn't see the nuance of the situation. They didn't understand the complexity of being a principal, where decisions often had to be made in the heat of the moment. They only saw the outcome, and the outcome, as far as they were concerned, was a principal who had failed to protect the students she was supposed to lead, and who had allowed personal biases to influence a critical decision. Wilson's personal life, too, was now under a microscope. Calls from old colleagues, friends, and even former students flooded her phone, all offering their condolences or, in some cases, their judgment. She tried to stay strong, but it was impossible not to feel the weight of it all. The endless calls, the messages of sympathy that sometimes felt like thinly veiled criticisms, and the public shaming that seemed to come from every direction. It all felt like a suffocating cloud that she couldn't escape. In the weeks that followed, Wilson tried to gather her thoughts and process the reality of what had happened. She had gone from being a respected figure in the community to someone whose name was associated with scandal. And there was no quick fix for this kind of damage. The damage to her career was permanent. The job she had worked for, the role she had taken so much pride in, was now just a shadow of what it had been. One day, she received a letter from the district, a formal acknowledgement of her resignation, offering her a severance package. It was generous, but it felt hollow. A farewell gift for a leader who had once been a fixture in the school community. The letter felt like a reminder that, in the end, she was just another casualty of the system. The weight of her decision to expel Jasmine, combined with the forces behind Mrs. Thompson's influence, had caused an irreversible cascade of events. Mrs. Thompson had not only protected her daughter, but had also dismantled Wilson's career with the precision of someone who had played this game before. Wilson had misjudged the power dynamics, and now, she was left to pick up the pieces of a career that had crumbled under the weight of a single, hasty decision. Her former colleagues, those who had once looked to her for guidance, now distanced themselves. Those who had been loyal to her, who believed in her ability to lead, had already moved on. No one wanted to be associated with a scandal, and Wilson, despite her years of hard work and dedication, had become a cautionary tale, an example of what happens when a leader oversteps their bounds and fails to recognize the real forces at play. In the end, it wasn't just about one student's expulsion, it was about how the system of power, influence, and bias worked in ways Wilson had never fully understood. And now, she was left to reflect on the choices she had made and the career she had lost. In the months that followed her resignation, Principal Wilson withdrew from the public eye. She'd always been a person who prided herself on her professional achievements, but now, with everything unraveling, she found herself questioning her own identity. For years, her work had been the center of her life. Now, with that work gone, she had to face the reality of who she was without the title of principal, without the respect she had once commanded. She spent the early days after her resignation in a state of numbness. She tried to fill the silence with long walks and reading, hoping to find some kind of clarity. But it was hard to shake the feeling that her whole world had crumbled. Every time she passed the school, every time she saw a student in the community, she was reminded of her failure. The guilt gnawed at her, especially when she thought about Jasmine, about how her impulsive decision had hurt not only the student, but had also caused harm to the very institution she had once served. But over time, as the shock began to wear off, Wilson started to realize that she couldn't keep running from her mistakes. She couldn't allow herself to remain stuck in this state. She couldn't allow herself to remain stuck in this state of self-pity and regret. She had always told her students that failure wasn't the end. It was an opportunity to learn, to grow, and to become better. Now, she had to take her own advice. In the quiet moments of reflection, she started to piece together the lessons from her downfall. The first thing she had to acknowledge was that her decision-making had been flawed, not because she had wanted to do harm, but because she had failed to fully understand the situation. She had acted on assumptions, not facts, and that was a mistake she could never take back. It wasn't just about one expulsion. It was about how she had treated the students she was meant to protect, and how she had let her own biases, however unconscious, shape her decisions. As the months went on, Wilson began to do something she had never allowed herself to do during her time as principal. She listened. She reached out to former colleagues, to students who had been affected by her decisions, and to mentors who had seen her at her best and worst. She started attending local meetings about education reform, listening to discussions about racial disparities in schools, and talking with experts who had spent their careers studying the very issues she had failed to address in her own leadership. Through this process of self-examination and learning, Wilson came to understand the broader implications of her actions. She realized that the power dynamics in schools, especially when it came to students of color, were far more complicated than she had ever acknowledged. The expulsion of Jasmine wasn't just about a single moment of bad judgment. It was about a larger system that too often overlooked the struggles of students from marginalized backgrounds. She had been part of that system, and now she had to confront the reality that her actions had reinforced it. But as painful as these realizations were, they were also the beginning of her path to redemption. Wilson knew that she couldn't undo the past, but she could start doing the work to make sure it didn't happen again. She enrolled in courses on restorative justice, leadership in diverse schools, and anti-bias training. She attended workshops on emotional intelligence and how to create inclusive, supportive environments for all students, especially those who had been historically underserved. She also started speaking out publicly, acknowledging her mistakes and sharing the lessons she had learned. She spoke at community events about the need for school leadership to be more accountable, to take a harder look at how students of color were disciplined, and to ensure that every decision made was done with empathy and fairness. She made it clear that her mistakes had cost her dearly, but she wasn't going to let those mistakes define her future. Wilson knew that regaining the trust of her former colleagues, students, and the community would take time. She had seen how quickly people could turn on you when you faltered, and she understood that rebuilding her reputation wasn't going to be easy. But as she continued her journey of learning and growing, she began to find small moments of healing. There were emails and letters from former students who thanked her for the guidance she had given them during her time as principal. There were teachers who expressed that they hoped to work with her again one day. And most importantly, there were conversations with Jasmine's family, in which they talked openly about the impact of the expulsion and the lessons they had all learned from it. It was a long road, and there were times when Wilson doubted herself, when she felt like the scars of her failure were too deep to ever heal. But with each step, she felt a little stronger, a little more certain that she could find a way to contribute to education again. Not as the principal who had failed, but as someone who understood the importance of humility, growth, and true leadership. In the end, Wilson realized that her fall from grace hadn't been the end of her story. It had been a turning point, a painful, difficult turning point, that had forced her to confront the realities of her own flaws and the broken system she had been part of. But it was also the beginning of her redemption, the start of a new chapter where she could use the lessons from her past to help create a better future for the students she hoped to one day serve again. As the months passed, Principal Wilson's journey toward redemption took on a new form. She had always known that leadership was about more than just managing a school. It was about influencing change, fostering growth, and helping others to rise. But now, she understood that true leadership began with self-awareness, self-accountability, and a willingness to learn from even the most painful mistakes. Wilson wasn't sure what the future held for her. Her career in education as a principal was likely over. But she began to see that her experience, painful as it was, had given her an invaluable perspective. The lessons she had learned were ones she could pass on to others. She could still make a difference, but not by returning to the same position of authority she had once held. She had to find a new path, one that would allow her to share what she had learned and to help others avoid the same mistakes. One day, an opportunity arose. A former colleague, someone who had seen both her strengths and weaknesses as a leader, reached out with a proposition. The district was beginning a new initiative focused on restorative practices and equity in schools, and they were looking for someone to help design and lead training programs for current school leaders. They needed someone who understood what it meant to make mistakes, someone who could speak honestly about the consequences of poor judgment, but also someone who could help others see the importance of empathy, inclusion, and fairness in their decision-making. At first, Wilson was hesitant. She wasn't sure if she was ready to step back into the world of education, even in a different capacity. But after much reflection, she realized that this was the very type of work she was meant to do. This was the way she could use her past experiences, not to bury them or pretend they never happened, but to teach others how to avoid the same pitfalls to ensure that mistakes like hers were not repeated. She accepted the offer, and with it, she began a new chapter in her career. This role wasn't about being in charge of a school or managing a staff. It was about empowering others to lead with empathy, fairness, and awareness. Wilson spent the next few years designing curriculum and leading workshops for school leaders, sharing the lessons she had learned from her own mistakes. She spoke openly about her journey, about how a rushed decision and an unwillingness to question her own biases had cost her everything. The training programs she led became successful, not just because of the content, but because of her authenticity. School leaders listened to her because they knew she wasn't just speaking from theory or academic knowledge. She was speaking from experience. She knew firsthand what it was like to face the fallout of a poor decision, and she was committed to helping others avoid making the same errors in judgment. She worked with teachers, administrators, and even students, helping them understand the importance of restorative justice practices, understanding cultural differences, and developing empathy for all students, especially those from marginalized communities. Her focus was always on the idea that leadership didn't mean exercising power. It meant creating a safe, inclusive space where everyone could thrive, and where decisions were made with fairness and a deep understanding of the people those decisions would impact. Over time, Wilson's reputation began to shift. While she would never fully escape the memory of her time as principal, she found a sense of peace in knowing that she had used her experiences to foster change. She wasn't perfect, and she would never claim to be. But she had become someone who could speak with authority on the importance of self-reflection, the danger of assumptions, and the critical role empathy plays in leadership. It wasn't easy. There were still moments of doubt, days when she questioned if she had made the right choices in the past. There were times when she wondered if she would ever regain the full trust of the community she had once served. But those moments of doubt grew fewer and fewer as she saw the impact of her work. She had changed the way others saw leadership, and in doing so, she had transformed herself, too. Then, one day, after a particularly impactful workshop, a young teacher approached her. "You've helped me realize how important it is to really listen to my students," she said, her voice full of gratitude. "I don't want to make the same mistakes you made, but hearing your story makes me want to be a better educator, a better leader." For Wilson, those words were more meaningful than any formal acknowledgement she had ever received. She had not only found a way to redeem herself, but had also become someone who could help others build a better, more inclusive future. In a way, she had created a new legacy, a legacy of growth, learning, and the power of second chances. The past would always be a part of her, but it no longer defined her. Wilson had come to understand that mistakes didn't have to be the end of the road. They could be the beginning of something better. And with that realization, she knew that her work was far from over. As the years went by, Principal Wilson's work in the district continued to evolve. What had started as an effort to redeem herself had blossomed into a full-fledged movement within local education circles. She became a well-respected voice for restorative practices, racial equity, and leadership transformation. The training program she developed expanded beyond her own district, and soon, she was invited to speak at national education conferences, sharing her story with leaders and educators from across the country. Her sessions became popular, not only for the depth of knowledge they offered, but also for the raw honesty with which she shared her personal journey. She was often approached by other educators who thanked her for showing them the importance of vulnerability in leadership. She taught them that it was okay to make mistakes, as long as they were willing to learn from them. And perhaps most importantly, she showed them that true leadership wasn't about wielding power, but about listening, growing, and using your position to make a positive impact on others. Wilson was now leading not just workshops, but creating systemic change. She worked with school districts to implement comprehensive reforms aimed at reducing the disproportionate disciplinary actions faced by students of color. Her work wasn't just about changing policies, it was about changing hearts and minds. She partnered with community organizations, student advocacy groups, and local government to ensure that the voices of those most affected by the school-to-prison pipeline were heard. It wasn't always easy. There were challenges, resistance from some school leaders who were stuck in traditional mindsets, misunderstandings from the public who couldn't see beyond her past mistakes, and the inevitable moments of self-doubt. But Wilson was committed. She had been given a second chance, and she wasn't about to waste it. Every time she saw a school leader begin to incorporate restorative practices or witnessed a community come together to address racial disparities, she felt a sense of purpose that she had never experienced before. One of the most rewarding moments in her new career came when she was asked to speak at a high school graduation. The principal of the school had been a participant in her restorative justice training, and the school had undergone a significant transformation in the way it handled student discipline. They had moved from punitive measures to more supportive, healing-centered approaches, and the results were clear. Fewer suspensions, better student engagement, and a stronger sense of community. During the ceremony, as Wilson sat in the audience, watching the students receive their diplomas, she couldn't help but reflect on how far she had come. She had been there once, graduating with hopes of making a difference, never knowing how the road would twist and turn. And now, here she was, witnessing the next generation of leaders stepping out into the world. As the principal introduced her as the guest speaker, Wilson stood and walked to the podium. The room fell silent as she began to speak. "I won't tell you my life story tonight," she started, a soft smile on her face. "But I do want to share one lesson I've learned, and it's something I hope you carry with you as you go forward into the world. Leadership isn't about being perfect. It's about owning your mistakes, learning from them, and using those lessons to help others. It's about creating spaces where people feel safe, valued, and heard. It's about working to create a world that's more just, more fair, and more compassionate." Her words resonated with the graduates, many of whom had faced challenges of their own, some of them from backgrounds similar to Jasmine's. The applause at the end of her speech was not just for the words she had spoken, but for the journey she had taken to get there. It was a reminder to everyone in the room that transformation was possible, both for individuals and for institutions. As Wilson walked off the stage, a sense of peace washed over her. She had never imagined her career would unfold this way, but in hindsight, she understood that everything had happened for a reason. Her failure had led her to a place of understanding and empathy she might never have reached if she hadn't fallen so hard. And while she couldn't undo the past, she had found a way to shape the future. Her journey had come full circle. From the principal who made a rash decision, to the educator who learned the hard way, to the advocate who fought to make sure others didn't have to experience the same pain. Wilson had built a new legacy, not one of authority and power, but of growth, compassion, and change. She had gone from being a symbol of failure to becoming a beacon of hope, not only for herself, but for the many students, teachers, and leaders she had helped along the way. In the end, Wilson realized that while her story was one of personal redemption, it was also about the power of community and the collective effort to create a better, more just world. And as long as she had the opportunity to keep learning, growing, and teaching, her work was far from over. Years after her resignation, Principal Wilson's journey had come full circle. She had not only redeemed herself, but had also become a driving force for positive change in education. Her work wasn't finished. There were still battles to be fought, policies to be challenged, and minds to be changed. But as she reflected on the lessons of her past, she realized that the most important lesson she had learned wasn't about leadership or discipline. It was about the power of second chances and the importance of self-forgiveness. One evening, as she sat in her office reviewing the latest report on student disciplinary reforms, she paused and looked out the window. She saw a group of students walking home from school, laughing and chatting together. She thought of Jasmine, of how her own rash decision had nearly derailed the life of a young girl who had so much potential. She thought of how, in the end, it wasn't the punishment that had mattered, but the opportunity to learn and grow from mistakes. Her mind wandered back to the conversation with Mrs. Thompson, the woman who had been both her adversary and her teacher. Jasmine's mother had never once offered an apology for her own actions, but Wilson realized that she didn't need one. Mrs. Thompson had forced her to confront the system, to look at the bigger picture, and to truly understand the power of her decisions. That confrontation had been the catalyst for Wilson's transformation. There were still times when the weight of her past mistakes pressed heavily on her. But with each day, with each new opportunity to make a difference, she knew she was moving further away from the person who had acted hastily and been blind to the deeper issues at play. She had become someone who made decisions with careful thought and empathy. She had learned, painfully and slowly, that leadership didn't come from power or position. It came from humility. It came from humility and the willingness to be wrong and to change. As she closed her office for the night, Wilson knew there was one final lesson she could pass on, one that summed up everything she had learned from her time as a principal, from her failures, and from her eventual redemption. True leadership is not about avoiding mistakes, but about having the courage to learn from them and the grace to help others do the same. With that thought, she left her office, ready for whatever the next chapter of her life would bring. She knew that the work of change was ongoing, but now, she had the tools, the experience, and the heart to continue that work, for the students, the teachers, and the community she served. Her story had come full circle, not because she had achieved perfection, but because she had learned to embrace the imperfections and use them as stepping stones to something greater. And in that, she had found the true meaning of redemption. Leadership is not about being perfect, but about owning your mistakes, learning from them, and using those lessons to make better decisions moving forward. True growth comes from humility, self-reflection, and the courage to change when you recognize you've gone wrong.